Everybody say we're just waiting on channel eight. Good evening, welcome. You can't hear?
Yeah, I think she's saying she hears us, but we don't hear her. Is it because I did the trans, I sent you up on the translation already? Uh, boy, hey Dan, can you call us real quick?
So I got channel eights ready to go, but I thought we should wait.
I've seen air on my end, but uh.
Mr. Ron, just give me the thumbs up when you think we're ready to go. We'll get going.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the virtual city council meeting of the city council of Lakewood, Colorado on September 27th, 2021. I'd like to welcome everybody who's participating this evening. A lot of really good things on the agenda for tonight. If you'd like to weigh in when we get to the portions for public comment, that number is one, two, five, three, two, one, five, eight, seven, eight, two. Webinar ID nine, two, four, five, two, nine, four, three, nine, five, eight. You'll press pound twice and then when we get to that section, please press star nine request to speak or star six. If you are already in the queue for public comment and you want to press star nine, that's great. And if you are having any issues, feel free to reach out apaul@lakewood.org. And we'll certainly try to make sure that we get that taken care of. So that'll be a little bit down the line, but feel free. If you'd like to raise your hand now, we can get to that point. So with that, Mr. Clerk, go ahead and do the roll, please.
All here. Abel.
Present.
Vincent.
Here.
Bida.
Here.
Skilling.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Johnson.
I am here.
LeBure.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Fantastic. Thank you. Now is the point in the meeting where we will rise for the pledge of allegiance and also have a moment of silent prayer. So if you please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the.
States of America and to the republic for which.
For which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. So real quick, I'm gonna read something that'll for some time going forward, just be part of our standard script. But this is a statement of conflict of interest. And to state that all members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of charter seven point two B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial or business interest. The city council is empowered by charter seven point two B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial or business interest. So with that, Mr. Clerk, will you please read the next item into the record? Item five.
Yes, sir. Item five is the mayor's inspiration awards.
All right. So this is the main event for tonight and a great opportunity for us to honor some incredible people and organizations as well as those who've served and moved on in our community. And this is extra special because we were not able to do this last year. And so this is kind of two years in the making. And while normally we'd have a wonderful reception and be able to have everybody here in council meet and thank you all, we're still a little bit limited in that regard, but I certainly look forward to trying to engage with these winners one on one here in the future. And so stay tuned for that. So from the script, we just want to thank you all for joining us for the 2021 mayor's inspiration awards. Virtual ceremony as we recognize the people and organizations who are making a difference in Lakewood each and every day. It has been a challenging 18 months or so and community support has been more needed than ever. And those who will be honored tonight have stepped up and met the challenge. So it's my great pleasure to turn this over to our master of ceremonies for the evening, our city manager, Ms. Kathy Hodson. And then after each award, we'll bring those folks in and you're welcome to talk a little bit with council and then council will have an opportunity at the very end to to make comments. So Ms. Hodson, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight we will recognize 16 outstanding individuals and organizations who have made their mark on our community. Winners of this award were selected by a committee of residents and city staff based on nominations received from the community. Nominations were weighed for the winner's impact in community engagement, collaboration, inclusiveness, diversity, innovation, and community impact. Many of this year's winners or their close friends and family members are here with us tonight and will have a chance to say a few words when their name is called. The mayor's inspiration award was created in 2017 when the Lakewood Advisory Commission recommended such an award to highlight the contributions of outstanding community members. City council members, we'd ask that you make your comments after the final winner has been recognized. At this time, I'd like to recognize the first group of winners, youth winners. First up is Coral Castellan. Coral is a student at Lakewood High School who has demonstrated an intense and caring interest in the plight of teens experiencing homelessness in the city. Helping educate teens facing drug and alcohol issues, she has volunteered at shelters with the Salvation Army and for the Jeffco Communities That Care Coalition. With the Communities That Care, Coral drafted a model proclamation targeting the difficult issues confronting youth experiencing homelessness. The proclamation was unanimously supported by the board of that organization. Coral plans to continue her advocacy for the homeless and marginalized when she attends college. Coral is a role model at her school and is often recognized for her servant's heart. Thank you, Coral, and congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm honored to get this award.
Awesome. We're thrilled to have you. Thank you.
Our second youth winner is Rosie Gavin. Rosie doesn't let being hard of hearing stop her from being a force in the community. Even with the challenges that masks have created for her lip reading skills, Rosie has mentored fellow teens in her forage club, serves as a youth leader at her church, and has helped build a home with Habitat for Humanity. Volunteerism is a big part of Rosie's life. She's helped other teens learn skills as varied as cake decorating and archery. What a range. Thank you, Rosie, for your dedication for your community.
Thank you.
All right. So I want to bring if we can Coral and Rosie. Is Coral still with us? So I would just personally like to thank you and open up the floor to to you both if you want to share anything with the community or you have any sort of insights for us. I'm always marveled at what our youth can do and what you're doing day in and day out to make our community a better place. So we we thank you. And if there's anything you'd like to add or share, please. All right.
Okay.
Might be a little clunky in this format, but we're glad you're here with us and we'll move on to our next award winners.
Yep.
Okay.
And we're used to clunky. Okay, let's continue by recognizing our first group of two of individual award winners. Leading off this category is Paul Miller. Paul was nominated for his work at the Jeffco Action Center, which describes him as a kind and gentle spoken community member who is always ready to help. He never hesitates to take on a new challenge and is always ready to say yes when asked to give back. In addition to his work at the Action Center, which can be anything from serving as a tour guide to sorting food and clothing donations, Paul is a force for good of his church Concordia Lutheran, where he serves as congregational vice president. Paul has lived in Colorado since 2015 and has been a regular volunteer at the Action Center since 2018. Thank you, Paul. And and we regret that Paul wasn't able to join us this evening. Next up is another Action Center volunteer Nancy Hardesty. Nancy leaves those around her with a smile on their faces and a feeling and feeling better about themselves. Her contagious exuberance made a big impact on those in need and those assisting them during tough times. She was not gonna let a pandemic stop her from loving and helping her community. She has dedicated more than a thousand hours of her time to the Action Center, saying that it's the people that she meets that makes it worthwhile. She says that she's incredibly grateful for the opportunity to help people and that keeps her coming back to volunteer week after week. Thank you for all that you do, Nancy.
Thank you.
Our final Action Center volunteer being recognized tonight is Linda Behrens. Linda is one of the Action Center's most dedicated and consistent volunteers. And get this, she dedicates five days a week and at least six hours a day. Wow. To the center's clothing distribution efforts. Described as a dynamo by her fellow volunteers, Linda is a rock at the Action Center and inspires others to stay focused on making a difference every day. The city truly appreciates all that you do, all that you do, Linda, and thank you. Rounding out this group is Tony Mansfield. Tony was nominated for his seven years of volunteerism with the Lakewood Ministry and is someone who has seen both sides of charity. He came to the ministry cold and experiencing homelessness one winter night and since has become a major part of outreach efforts, driving a food bank truck, which helped to feed more than 2,000 families every month. He often did this in poor weather and on his own. In addition to driving and donating his time, Tony has donated food and other items when he can. He continued to do this throughout the COVID-19 pandemic when people had needed it more than ever. Tony was admitted to hospital earlier this year and continues to make his recovery there. Thank you, Tony, and we wish you the best on your recovery. Nancy, Linda, and Dr. Clifton, who is here for Tommy, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you all so much and certainly would would welcome an opportunity if you'd like to to talk or say anything. I I have Dr. Clifton up top and then Linda and Nancy. Dr. Clifton, if you want to share anything.
Mr. Mayor and city council, I'd like to thank the council and everyone. I'm a pastor, so I'd like to honor the Lord on behalf of Anthony Mansfield. Anthony is a part of our family and we're so grateful for the award that you bestowed upon him. I believe if he was out of hospital right now, he might be jumping up in that. So thank you very much.
And he's got a great fan club. That's great, Doctor. Thank you. And we'll try to certainly stop by and say hello. So thank you.
Thank you again.
Yeah. Linda, Nancy, anything you'd like to add? Certainly how wonderful it is to to see you here. And I know I've seen you around the Action Center, but thank you so much for the time that you give.
I would like to say that I'm just totally honored and appreciative of this award for something that I love to do every day.
And I would follow up with what Linda said that it's certainly an honor to be able to support my community in such a wonderful way. So thank you.
Thank you. We're giving you a round of applause. So thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Let's move on to the second group of individual winners. First up is Beric Abrinson. Beric took advantage of stay at home recommendations by undertaking a sustainable backyard gardening project, which turned into a neighborhood gathering spot as the pandemic progressed and people were feeling isolated. The garden became a focal point as neighbors who hadn't spoken or met in years began to get to know each other and open up. The garden was also a success in that it produced more than Beric and his fiance needed. So Beric bakes zucchini bread and other goodies to share with his neighbors. And I wish I knew where he lived. This, this was all happening as Beric was in the midst of recovering from surgeries after Crohn's disease nearly killed him. And while he was working in public policy consulting and helping leaders tackle the many and significant challenges of COVID-19, Beric remained optimistic through these challenges and his garden serves a bright green spot in his neighborhood. Thank you, Beric. Next is Lauren Evans. Lauren has lived in Lakewood for nearly 40 years since graduating from the Colorado School of Mines next door in Golden. She founded an engineering company, Pinion Environmental, in her garage in 1992. Pinion's headquarters are still in Lakewood, providing dozens of jobs in the community. The company has been recognized as one of the state's top women owned companies for a decade. On top of this, Lauren has committed time and energy to several volunteer and civic efforts. Colorado CASA, court appointed special advocates, serving as chairperson of the Colorado Hazardous Waste Commission and mentoring youth interns as they begin their careers in environmental services. Thank you for all that you have done in your decades here in Lakewood, Lauren. Finally, we'd like to recognize Jane Barnes. Jane is one of the inspiring forces behind the local nonprofit organization Benefits in Action, which she helped to found in 2015. Even before COVID-19, she was helping people navigate the often confusing regulations and red tape to obtain health insurance and other benefits that they were entitled to. COVID heightened the need for this kind of service and Jane dove in headfirst. Benefits in Action began a contactless food delivery service, which now serves the whole metro area. Jane has led the coalition to end hunger in Lakewood and is a member of the Alameda West Kiwanis Club for decades, including serving as a president of that group, which has done so much for Lakewood and for the Jefferson County. This only really scratches the surface of Jane's efforts to make Lakewood a better place to live. Thank you, Jane. Beric, Lauren, and Jane, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Kathy. We are so thrilled to have all of you and certainly I'm gonna start with Beric. If you'd like to to say anything or give any words of wisdom, I know you've had incredible couple of years and really taken on a lot of challenging things and I think moved from doing a garden to doing a van now and continue to find projects to keep you busy.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you for your leadership and all the council members for all you continue to do for this city. I think the last few years in life and certainly this pandemic we've gone through have just been a reminder that it's about neighbors looking out for neighbors and taking care of one another. And we were thrilled when we moved here over 10 years ago and people opened their arms to us and it's been great to get to know our neighbors and get to share whether it's flowers with our elderly neighbor, obviously bountiful amounts of squash and tomatoes and everything else. And even the guys from West Metro came by to take care of our garden and feed themselves while we went on a brief vacation. So humbled and honored by the opportunity to be here. Thank you all.
Yeah, so cool. Thank you. Thank you for for certainly sharing that. So Lauren, good evening. Thanks for being here. It's nice to see you. It's been a while. You've certainly been very active in Lakewood for a long time and we're thrilled to have this honor tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, and thank you, City Council and the committee for the honor. Truly is humbling, as Beric said. And I just want to thank all the other award winners because it's people like them that make this a great city to live in. So thank you all.
Great. And last but certainly not least, Jane, good evening. And I know none of the folks being recognized tonight probably would really want to be recognized. You do this just because of who you are. And I know Jane was certainly one of those as I ran into her colleague over the weekend and she had no idea that we were even celebrating Jane tonight. So we're glad we have this opportunity and certainly something that's special to me is your advocacy that you've taken to end hunger in the city of Lakewood. So welcome. I think you're on mute.
You'd think by this time in our life, in this pandemic, we'd all know that, right? It's gonna be that thing we say forever, you're on mute. But anyway, thank you, Mayor Paul, and City Council and City Manager Hodgson. I'm thrilled to be here tonight and and just to bring light to the issue of hunger in Lakewood, actually. I think it's it's really important to take these opportunities that we have to remind people that we never know, but it may be our neighbor that's hungry and and there is no specific face of hunger. So sorry to get on my soapbox, but it's an important issue for me and I am just thrilled to live in Lakewood. We stumbled upon Lakewood when we moved to the Denver metro area decades ago, as someone said in that letter. And we're thrilled to live here and I just try to try to encourage everyone to make this a great place to live. So it's very important.
Very cool. Thank you.
Wonderful and humbled by their service. Okay, we are now moving to recognizing this year's winners in the organization category. Let's begin by highlighting the work of Eaton Senior Communities. Eaton has been on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic, which has hit the senior communities extremely hard. In the early days of the pandemic, the guidance changed on a frequent basis, but the staff and residents at Eaton rolled with the changes. Because of their efforts and diligence, Eaton did not suffer a single community spread incident throughout the whole pandemic. Some of the changes made include no contact meals, sanitizing of services, and the payment of hazard pay to staff to recognize their extraordinary efforts. Residents pitched in as well, sewing masks, learning new technologies to stand in touch with friends and family, and demonstrating resiliency in tough times. Thank you for your efforts in an incredibly difficult and complex situation, Eaton team. Next up is the Jefferson County Library Foundation. The Jeffco Library Foundation and its volunteers have contributed in several major ways to the Lakewood community over the past 18 months, ensuring that adults and children alike had equitable access to reading materials even in the midst of the pandemic. The foundation supports the STEM Girls and Summer Reading Program at two of the Lakewood libraries. They pay special attention to early childhood literacy programs like Babies First Books and a thousand books before kindergarten. They've also opened a brick and mortar store at Colorado Mills Mall, the Whale's Tale Book and Gift Shop. By the way, that's an incredible store and I love it. Proceeds of sales go right back into serving the foundation's goals of assisting library programs. Finally, even the pandemic couldn't stop the whale of a used bookstore held at the Church of Nazarene in Lakewood earlier this year. Volunteers sorted and priced donated books and other media for the sale, which supported library programs. For all you do, thank you to the executive director, Joe Shantz, and your team of volunteers. And now we recognize the team at Conectando. When COVID-19 pandemic began to really impact Lakewood in March 2020, Conectando had a concern that this virus's impacts would have a terrible impact on the Latino communities and immediately began taking action to mitigate that impact. The group created a Spanish language phone line, which directed non-English speakers to the resources they needed, including rental assistance, food banks, testing sites, and more. Today, Conectando has linked people with more than $1.4 million in benefits. It has also worked to make food and clothing distribution sites more welcoming to the Latino community by providing translators and removing unnecessary red tape that might prevent people from taking advantage of these programs. On the health front, Conectando advocated for a dedicated bilingual COVID testing site, which was realized when such a site was set up at Mile High Church here in Lakewood. That when vaccines were available, Conectando continued to work with Jeffco Public Health to support community vaccine clinics, including one at Alameda Crossing Shopping Center, where the vast majority of vaccine recipients were Spanish speaking. This would not have been possible without the volunteers of Conectando. The group continues to provide food and health clinics around the city to this day. Thank you so much for your efforts, Conectando.
And three incredible organizations and we have Diane Delgado with us tonight from Eaton Senior. Nice to see you. And yeah, an incredible partner in so many things and just like to welcome you tonight. And if you have anything to say, please.
Yes, thank you in particular for all of your support of our organization over the years and to City Manager Hodgson, the city council members and the committee for awarding us this esteemed honor. We are very grateful to be part of the Lakewood community and on behalf of our residents and staff, we just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe, good evening. Long time since we've seen you.
Hello. Yes, again, just want to say thank you so very much for this honor. The Jeffco Library Foundation has been around for more than 55 years, long, long time. And we are very privileged and proud that we are able to support Jefferson County Public Libraries and in specific the Bellmar and the Lakewood Libraries. Jefferson County Public Libraries and in specific, the Belmar and the Lakewood Libraries. And I will let you know that we recently received a very large contribution of a hundred thousand dollars from one of our major donors. That combined with some funding that we received from others, we will be able to start the Belmar outdoor adventure space hopefully sometime soon. So we are really thrilled and excited by that wonderful opportunity to give back to our community that supports us so much. So thank you for this honor and this privilege.
That's fantastic. Great news. Always fun stuff to look out for and we appreciate your partnership.
Thank you.
Certainly, last but not least, Cynthia is here, Conectando. And I had the opportunity to personally meet many of the volunteers at the day when we were giving away turkeys in that picture. I guess that's up there. But the work that you've done, the outreach and the time is just so incredible and we're so grateful for you and what you've done and the outreach you've been able to provide to a community that maybe we're not as good at trying to connect with. So it's truly an inspiration to this group for all that you've done. And if you'd like to please say anything, that'd be fantastic. And I think you're on mute. Yeah, there you go.
Hola, buenas noches. Muchas gracias. Es un honor para nosotras estar aquí esta noche en recibiendo este reconocimiento y en sí estamos representando a todas esas voluntarias, madres de familia que dejaron sus familias para salir cuando empezó la pandemia, salir al frente y ayudarnos con la distribución de comida. Que sin la ayuda de las voluntarias no hubiera sido posible haber sacado tantas distribuciones y todavía hasta la fecha continuamos haciéndolo. Gracias a esa labor tan hermosa que es el voluntariado, tanta gente que hay detrás de nosotras. Muchas gracias por todo. Tengo mi compañera Heidi, ella también quiere hablar.
¿Qué tal? Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Heidi Rodríguez. Y viendo todo lo que hacen, creo que estamos un gran cambio para la ciudad de Lakewood, representando la comunidad de habla hispana. Pudimos estar en tiempos que nadie estaba trabajando haciendo más voluntariado. A mí me dio mucho gusto saber que no estamos solas, que tenemos el apoyo de la ciudad también en reconocimiento porque lo necesitamos para para que esos voluntarios como yo tengamos más ganas de hacerlo porque sabemos que nuestro trabajo no está hecho en nada. Nos dio gusto poder ayudar a familias que no podían pagar la renta, poder ayudar con la comida y así ese dinero lo usaban para otras cosas. Y también las vacunas, poder ser parte del cambio porque como unidad tenemos que estar seguros y hacer ese cambio con personas que solo por la barrera del lenguaje no se sentían incluidos. Gracias por incluirlos porque para mí es muy importante que nos tomen en cuenta a nuestra comunidad hispana, también como a la comunidad vietnamiz. Ellos también fueron personas que estuvieron llegando. Estuvimos también haciendo lo que fue el, ¿cómo se dice? Fue algo para lo económico, que se apoyaron a negocios, varios negocios de habla hispana, vietnamiz, que ellos no habían recibido información. Pudimos ir a hablar con los negocios y decirles que aplicaran para ese fondo que era recibirlo porque fueron negocios bastante impactados. Las vacunas, los negocios, todo fue algo que no hubiera sido posible, como dice Cynthia, sin la ayuda de los voluntarios y como los miembros de consejo con ustedes, que contamos con ese apoyo que están apuchando, empujando a que podamos seguir manteniendo esta organización. Les damos las gracias en nombre de todas las personas que no pudieron conectarse hoy y bendiciones. Gracias.
Gracias.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to a second group of organizational winners. They won a sustainability award earlier this year and now will receive an inspiration award. What a year for Ballmer Peak Distillery. Ballmer Peak is a Lakewood-based small business located near Green Mountain, which has had a major impact in its relatively short time in business. Without any prompting, Austin and Eric at Ballmer Peak pivoted their distillery to produce large quantities of sanitizer at the beginning of the pandemic as other supplies were running short nationwide. They looked around to local healthcare, first responder, and assisted living facilities and gave them sanitizer at no cost and provided sanitizer at cost or for trade to other local businesses which suddenly found themselves needing it. This helped many of these businesses to stay open and continue to make money even during the most restrictive lockdown periods. In addition, along with Alameda Connects, Ballmer Peak worked with Belmar to set up sanitizer stations to enable that area to continue to welcome guests and stay in accordance with public health mandates. Throughout this time, Ballmer Peak has kept a community-oriented focus, helping other local businesses in creative ways, like working with the Donut Club to create a Groundhog Day-themed cocktail and snack. Lakewood is fortunate to have you here and thank you for all that you do.
Thanks.
Last but certainly not least, among organizational winners is the Action Center. We've highlighted the work of some of the Action Center's volunteers earlier this evening and the organization for which they work is a backbone of community service in Lakewood. This nonprofit has stepped up to the challenges of COVID, providing people in need vital services, including food, clothing, and household goods. Those experiencing homelessness can receive important mail there or use phones and computers to seek employment or stay in contact with loved ones or government services. The center also serves as a connective hub for a range of other services, putting people in touch with heating, housing, transportation, and senior services. The volunteers and full-time staff at the Action Center always go above and beyond to treat those who use the services with respect and dignity. And for that, we thank you. Welcome, Ballmer Peak and the Action Center.
It's great to see you. Austin, how are you tonight? You're always come to the meetings prepared and make us all dills with the cocktail in your hand.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's an honor. Thank you for for this award. On behalf of myself and Eric, who couldn't be here tonight, we're just so blown away and honored to be up here with these other award winners and other community inspirations. When the pandemic first hit, we felt like we we were scared. There was nothing, you know, we couldn't make money. So we did what we could do and that was use our equipment to make hand sanitizer, which was in high demand and no supply and just give it out to help calm people down. We knew that it would help us, you know, be less stressed, less afraid or unsure of the of the future if we could at least have some control and and have some way to keep our hands sanitized when we couldn't find sanitizer in the store. So thanks to the community to actually coming out and saving us at the same time by, you know, remembering that we were here. We'd only been open for four months at the time and kind of no one knew we existed. So that's kind of how we got the name out. And this past summer, people have responded. And we still get people that are coming back and said, "Remember when you guys were doing sanitizer? That was that was when I first learned about you." And then they'll come in and buy something, but also ask for a refill on their sanitizer. So we're like I said, we're glad to be here. Love the community, love Lakewood, and want to be as involved with with every aspect as we can. So thanks again and cheers.
Cheers. So cool. And you certainly walk the walk and talk the talk. You have been so active in all kinds of different aspects of the city and the business group. So thank you and happy to toast to your success. Pam, good evening. The Action Center, how wonderful. And certainly we've honored a lot of the folks that helped make this organization run. And I know that you've served more and given more these last few months than probably in history. And so thank you so much for helping our community through some of the most challenging times we've seen.
Thank you so much, Mayor Paul. Thank you, City Manager Hodgson. So good to be here. Thank you, City Council members. What an honor for you to recognize the work of the Action Center. And I want to just do a quick shout out myself to our amazing volunteers who you recognized this evening, Nancy and Linda and Paul, and the hundreds of other volunteers who are with us all the time. And really what I wanted to say is just thanks to the community in general because without the community of our volunteers, of our donors, of the city, who has supported us so greatly during this time, we wouldn't have been able to step up to that really tremendous need that we've all seen this year. And with your support, we have been able to double our capacity, more than double our capacity, sometimes close to triple in our food distribution line. Our rent assistance distribution went from about a hundred thousand dollars a year to over we've just passed three million dollars of distribution of rent assistance since COVID began. And so we're just so grateful to all of you and to the support this community has given us so generously so that we could do the same for those in our community who are really stressed right now and are really in need. So thank you so much for being with us and thanks for helping us to be with the community. And we so appreciate this honor. And on behalf of all of our staff, I don't want to forget to mention our staff because I have the most hard-working staff I think anyone could ever imagine. And I'm accepting this honor for all of them. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. And this will take us to our final category, which is a new one this year and certainly very special to our community. So Ms. Hodgson, please.
Thank you. We will close out tonight's ceremony by giving out a pair of inspiration awards in memoriam for former Lakewood Police Department Chiefs, Charles Johnson and Ron Burns. And I'm lucky because I knew him both. Charlie Johnson was the director and later chief of the Lakewood Police Department for nearly twenty years. In his thirty-year career with the department, he headed every division and even served a two-year term as acting city manager. Before becoming a police officer, Johnston served in Vietnam, receiving four Bronze Stars and flying fifty helicopter missions. He was a proud booster of the Special Olympics and was inducted into its Colorado Hall of Fame for his contributions. His legacy lives on at the Lakewood Police Department through the Speaker's Bureau, Neighborhood Watch, and Citizens Police Academy programs, all which began on his watch. He passed away in April twenty twenty-one and will be remembered as a leader with a great sense of humor who helped transform the LPD into what it is today. Ron Burns served with distinction for six years as the chief of the Lakewood Police Department at the turn of the millennium. He is remembered there as always leading by example, showing a willingness to listen to the community and forward-thinking nature that quickly earned him the loyalty and respect of his colleagues. Burns focused on community policing and was a visible and active leader. He would often prepare meals for those agents who had to work during the holidays. He baked cookies for the Citizens Police Academy and would visit sick and injured agents and volunteers. Chief Burns passed away on January second, twenty twenty-one, and will be remembered as a charismatic but humble man who made the Lakewood Police Department and every organization he was part of a better place than it was when he founded it. To the families of Chiefs Johnston and Burns, thank you for your family members' dedication to the city and for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Hodgson. And this is truly special. And I see that we have Dave Burns tuning in from the Phoenix area who has a daily radio show. So we're thrilled to have you. And I believe that we have some Johnstons on as well. One that is maybe at the firehouse tonight. So you know, our police department has really been what's made our city, I think, unique in so many ways and so fundamental to who we are and the professionalism that both these gentlemen brought to their service and to the community. And so it's just a great opportunity for us to honor these men. And Mr. Burns, thank you for being with us tonight. And I'll certainly turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about my father. I will never turn down an opportunity to talk about my father and how much he loved the community of Lakewood. We were just there for his memorial service a couple of months ago and the outpouring of support from the community towards my stepmother Nancy and my brothers Matt and Ryan and myself and our wives and all of our kids, my father's grandchildren. It was overwhelming and the dedication of the bench outside of the police department, which overlooked the park, that he loved to walk his dogs every single day. It still, it means so much to us. That was such a wonderful trip for us. And I can say with true sincerity that his love of that community was unlike anything I'd ever seen out of my father over all the years that I was lucky enough to to know him. We were native Arizonans all the way. But when he moved to Lakewood, when he took the job up there, that community just, it embraced him. It took his heart. And he kept it close to his heart throughout his entire life. I know it meant so much to him and this would mean so much to him to be recognized in a forum like this. So on behalf of Nancy and my brothers Matt and Ryan and Carissa and Carrie and Eda and all of the kids and all of the grandkids, thank you very much for recognizing our father for everything that he's done. His memory lives on and I appreciate everything that you guys have done for him. Thank you so much.
Beautiful. Thank you so much and thank you for joining us this evening. Mr. Clerk, do we have Mike or Chris Johnston available or Ms. Joni Johnston available?
So we do have, it looks like maybe two by phone. And we've asked them to unmute. You may need to remind them about the star six. And then we do have Mike Johnston here. There you go.
There he is. All right. Good evening, Mike. You are on mute. There you go. Now we can hear you.
There we go. Okay, I'm not real familiar with the Zoom technology here. So thanks for bearing with me. Now, I was going to say, you know, on behalf of our stepmother Joni and my brother and myself and our families, that thank you for this recognition. You know, we know like Mr. Burns was saying there, how much the city of Lakewood meant to our father as well and the Lakewood Police Department as well. So I know how much this recognition from the city of Lakewood would have meant to him. So thank you for that. We very much appreciate it. And I would say on behalf of the Fire Department here, we would also like to say thank you to Belmar Park Distillery and their hand sanitizer because we certainly use that.
That's fantastic. Well, thank you. Thanks for trying to carve out a little bit of time. And again, it looks like you're on duty. And Joni or Chris, if you're on, if you want to press was it to unmute star? I should know this by now. Star six to unmute, you are live. Do we have anybody?
So, Mr. Mayor, the zero, okay, they're unmuted, the phone call.
Okay.
I'm here.
Well, good evening. Thank you for joining us and allowing us to honor your husband and thank you all for the service to our community. And if you'd like to say a few words, you have this opportunity, please.
Thank you so much. I know Charlie would just be thrilled to know that after all these years, he he was retired for twenty years, that he is still getting recognition for all of the work he did within the police department. And he retired in two thousand and one and passed away here just in April of this year. And but his twenty years of retirement, he went on to inspire a lot of people along the way, maybe not so much in law enforcement, but just in everyday life. He led a good life and a happy life. And I know his happy life extended to me and I was a happy wife. And I do also want to extend a lot of thanks to his son, Mike, who is with the West Metro Fire Department. And I think he's following in his father's footsteps by serving the community in the best way possible. Just thank you to everyone. I hope some of you might have remembered me even. I worked for the city of Lakewood Clearback over twenty years ago and enjoyed it very much. And it's such a wonderful community to have been part of. So thank you and I will remember this reward forever. Thank you.
How wonderful. Thank you. And I do think, Chris, if you want to unmute, you are on also star six, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll just reflect with Joni and my brother had to say, I know this was really an epicenter of my dad to really, you know, unveil his passion for
an epicenter of my dad to really, you know, unveil his passion for making a better community and with his nonprofit work with the Special Olympics. And so I remember my first few days of going to the department and seeing how much pride my dad had in in the police force. And so I think we're very thankful for for the recognition for that. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So welcome. Well, thank you all for joining us and being a part of this celebration. And I know, again, it's a little bit different in this format, but we have some really cool plaques that we'll be able to send to you. And then for all the winners will be displayed at City Hall in the main area to honor everyone this evening for their dedication to the community. So with that, we'll go ahead and open this up to City Council. So if we want to go back to our regular screen and see if council would like to add anything. All right, I've seen a lot of applause, so that's fantastic. And I don't see any hands up. So I think we all share in the gratitude for for everybody. And you know what really truly makes a community are the people in it. And that's what we're here to honor tonight. So to every one of you and to all organizations, thank you for everything. And we wish you all the best and hope that you continue to do wonderful things in the community. So thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and give it a quick second. We'll move on. So unfortunately, for some of you, we're going to kick you out of the meeting. You're welcome to watch online if you'd like to stay. And we'll get back to our regular council group here. We'll give that a quick second. Ms. Hodgson, thank you also. While we're kind of reconfiguring, thank you for emceeing. You did a great job. And to Dan Stottemeyer, who really kind of navigated, put this all together, got the scripts ready and has done a great job coordinating. Thank you, Dan, for that as well. And Bernie was helping bring people into the meetings. So thank you, Bernie. So now we will continue on. Do we have, are we back to normal-ish? Do we have everybody on council? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move forward. This is the point in the meeting for general public comment. The public is invited to address the city councils on, address the city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that all persons calling in observe the same decorum of a city council meeting held in person in council chambers. Again, the call in for this evening is 1-253-215-8782. The webinar ID of 924-5294-3958. Pound and then pound once more. Star nine to raise your hand. So if you do wish to speak in this section, please feel free to raise your hand right now. And then when the clerk calls on you, we will unmute you. I'll ask for your name and address or name and ward. And then I will start the three minutes. When you get to 30 seconds, you will hear and then when your time is up, you'll hear that again. And I'll ask you to politely wrap that up. So while we're getting ready to ensure that everybody, we have Lenore and Joshua in the holding area. So again, if you wish to speak in general public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. All right, Mr. Clerk, please.
Yes, we'll start with Lenore Herskowitz.
Right. Good evening, Lenore. You should be unmuted and ready to go.
Thank you. That was a very impressive group tonight. Very impressive. Each time I call in, I try to stress the importance of transparency and accountability. So tonight, I'd like to let council and the constituents know that the docket has been set for the CCU lawsuit. On December 15, the pretrial readiness conference between the parties is scheduled for 1:00 p.m. and another one is scheduled on January 14 at 1:15 p.m. The court trial itself. What was that?
It sounds like maybe we had somebody else come in. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I won't stop your time. Just go ahead.
Okay, that's fine. I don't have much. The court trial itself is set for full days on January 18 and 19 next year. And this will play, take place at the Jefferson County Courthouse, Division Eight, Courtroom 400. When possible, I feel like full disclosure is is preferable to secrecy. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm glad you got in tonight with ease, it sounds like, too. So thank you. All right, next up.
Mr. Joshua Comden.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Comden.
Hello. Yes, my name is Joshua Comden. I'm in Ward One. And I want to tell you a little story that happened exactly one month ago on August 27, on a Friday night, 9:00 p.m. Two of my friends and I, we were walking down Sheridan at 9:00 p.m. near Colfax. And there was a man in a wheelchair in the in the bus stop by the 7-Eleven there. And he asked us if we could call an ambulance for him. And he smelled a lot like urine and all this. And and he was shaking, shaking a lot. And there was two officers at the 7-Eleven nearby. And so we asked him, can we go grab the officers to, you know, help out with the situation? And he was like, I don't care. I just want an ambulance. Okay. So we go over, talk to them. They come over and but their behaviors were like complete opposite of each other. One came in very nicely, confidently, talked to the guy and said, hey, mister, he knew his name. And he said, what's going on? I hear you need an ambulance. What's happening? The other officer, completely different, started running around, barking orders at people, the guys that were standing behind the bus stop, shoving them, kicking sodas, and even like throwing a very nice hoodie in the trash can and then throwing in sodas afterwards. And so after this situation had happened and ended, my friend asked, then I guess you could say nicer officer, like said, well, what about your your partner's, you know, behavior? And he said, oh, sorry, I didn't see it because I was paying attention to this thing. But, you know, I trust my I trust my partner that he was probably fine. So I bring this back to talk about having a civilian review board because it's sometimes hard to admit that we need something like this because sometimes they're doing such a good job in what they're doing, but in other times they aren't. And when they aren't, usually we try to give them the benefit of the doubt. You know, it was a hard situation. Things were happening too fast. But I think this situation was not serious enough where I had to make a formal complaint or anything. But had something serious happened, things might have been different. And so I don't have any evidence of it. It's just what I saw on all that. But it it just brings to mind of like why I think we should really have a civilian review. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Again, for folks that are tuning in, this is general public comment. So if you wish to speak, please press star nine. And when the clerk calls on you, if you give us your name and ward or name and address, we'll start your three minutes.
Yes, we have last four of 4375.
4375, good evening. If you pressed, there you go. Now you're on.
Hi there. Thanks for hosting this space for everybody to call in and give public comment. Really appreciate it. And I just wanted to, kind of in line with the previous caller, that police accountability seems to be an ongoing concern of many, you know, residents and and people who come to, you know, to come to these meetings and share and and express, you know, opinions. And it doesn't seem like there's been, you know, really any any action on the part of Lakewood government to to respond to some of those concerns. And so I'm just wondering what exactly, you know, is being done. You know, I I know that there was a proposal and a suggestion and an idea to before the city council and before the city about instituting a STAR program like the one that's in Denver that's been wildly successful. And now, you know, it is appearing as if the city of Lakewood is is not really interested in moving forward with that initiative that would, you know, protect and 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 keep safe the people who have the police encounters who are really in need of mental health services. And so in terms of just the safety of everybody, I'm wondering why then why Lakewood has not really moved or expressed any interest in, you know, exploring some of these ideas and in holding the police accountable, even in even in like as little, you know, gestures as having body cams, which the, you know, y'all are one of three three police departments in the state that don't have body cams yet. So there's just a number of things that that are concerning. And thank you.
Could you give us your name for the record, please?
Oh, yes. My name is Tess. I'm sorry. My name is Tess.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next.
5361.
All right, 5361, you are up. If you have your name and address or name and ward, we'll get you going. Just go ahead and unmute yourself, star six. There you go.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm going to follow suit with the rest of the folks that have been talking about accountability and the SAR program. From going into some meetings back over in Denver, I've learned a lot about the SAR program and the successes it's had. I think that there hasn't been a single call that the SAR program has had to go to that the police officer was required to come to in need of action, right? There's been no time that they needed that. And as far as I've been told, the police don't actually want to be taking care of mental health calls. They're not trained for it. It's not, shouldn't be their job. It should be professionals that are trained for mental health calls that should be taking care of that stuff. It makes absolutely no sense why the the city would not want to have this. And I'm surprised there's not an uproar unless the city, people in the city don't actually know that you guys are turning this down or pushing it away. You should be jumping for joy that it's trying to come come there and people want to want to do it there. And I hate to say this, but if 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 the gentleman they were just talking about left the city in a better place than it was when he got there, the place was in a real shitty place prior to you. Because right now, the police office, the police force is not a good force. Very, very, very terrible. Y'all need to step up your game, start treating people with respect, stop being racist. You know, get your body cameras. And if you're guys, if they're such good cops, then why wouldn't they want to have the body cameras so they could prove us all wrong? Huh? I don't know what what's that. But they don't want the body cameras. They don't want anybody to see how bad they are. Get your shit together.
Lovely. All right. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, give it a quick second. All right, we'll close general public comment and just make a couple of things I'll address real quick. You know, certainly to the point of any sort of issue you see with the police department, please reach out and notify them if if they feel like they weren't acting professionally. They don't know unless people reach out. So I had a case just recently where there was a concern. And we made sure that we got that addressed. So to the caller that was dealing with a situation on Colfax and Sheridan, please reach out, let us know. We'll make sure that we try to figure out what happened and we can always learn to do better. Another thing, folks continue to talk about the STAR program, and we actually do have a pretty robust coresponder. It's not called STAR, but we have navigators. We have partners with Jefferson Center for Mental Health. And we also have our law enforcement assistive version. So while it's not the STAR program that you see in Denver, it is certainly something that fits for what we need and certainly something that council can discuss at their upcoming retreat if we want to see something more enhanced. I have an idea where a lot of this comes from. And if some of those folks would tune into meetings such as the one that we just had with the county, the there was a presentation by the Jefferson Center for Mental Health where they talked about the coresponder program and the thousands of people that they've been able to contact. And also, some on council have talked about looking at a porch light type model that not only serves Lakewood, but serves all of Jefferson County. So, you know, if folks want to understand more of what we're doing, please reach out. There's a lot that we're doing. There's a lot that we can learn. We've looked at the Kahoots program, which is actually the program that started all of this in Oregon. So I think we're pretty familiar and certainly want to find all the ways that we can to address these sorts of things. So with that, we'll move on to the next item. Does not look like we have an executive report tonight. So thank you, Ms. Hodgson. And then we'll move on to the consent agenda, which the use of the consent agenda has been made to expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Looks like tonight it's all resolutions. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of their proposed resolutions. First reading ordinances, which again, we don't have. So I'll skip that. And it looks like all of our ordinances tonight, well, most of them, okay. So we'd have appointments to Karen Harrison and then two from our screening committee. So I'll ask the clerk to please read that in to the record, the consent agenda.
Yes, excuse me. Item eight is Resolution 2021-45, appointing a member to the City Council Development Dialogue Committee. Item nine is Resolution 2021-46, appointing a member to the City Council Screening Committee. Item 10 is Resolution 2021-47, appointing a member to the Historic Preservation Commission. And item 11 is Resolution 2021-48, appointing members to the Lakewood Advisory Commission.
Okay, I'll now open public comment on the resolutions that are before us for the appointments. If anybody wishes to speak on these in same rule, three minutes, give us your name and address or ward, we'll get you going.
So we have a 4375.
Okay, 4375, you are up to speak to the resolutions before us. If you press star six to unmute, we'll get you going.
Thanks. Hi there. It's Tess again. I was just wanting to comment on the fact that corresponding programs
So this isn't, this isn't, this isn't, this isn't public comment. So do you have anything you'd like to talk about regarding the consent agenda?
No, I just wanted to respond to your response. That was actually factually incorrect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to, before we go to a motion and a vote, turn over to the chair of our screening committee. Is that Counselor Franks? And I'll have you go ahead if you'd like to introduce our folks and we can congratulate them. Hopefully, they make it in.
Well, thanks, Mayor Paul. I think I can speak on behalf of the entire screening committee that we just continue to be so inspired and impressed by by the folks who come out to apply for our openings. We did, we do have, I believe, John Hostager. He is going to be recommended for the Historic Preservation Commission. And I do see him in the attendee list. And then we have three for the Lakewood Advisory Commission. We have Fernando Rocha, and I believe he is in the meeting as well. James Engdahl. I do not see James, maybe our call in user. And I am going to try on our third person's name. Just just bear with me. Megan Oye Dele is also recommended for the Lakewood Advisory Commission. And again, we're just so thrilled to have everyone. And if you're interested in applying for an opening, be sure to check out our openings for boards and commissions on the Lakewood website. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you to all the folks who are willing to sign up and Thank you. And again, thank you to all the folks who are are willing to sign up and serve. So with that, Mayor Pro Tem will take a motion.
I move to the adoption of the resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any other questions or comments can just echo our thanks. So motion, a second on the consent, please cast your votes. Looks like that passes ten ayes and zero nays. All right, so under general business, we have one motion. So as many of you know, when we get close to October, um, we start to have pretty scrunched meetings because of our two public hearings. And so this meeting next week has been posted for weeks and it was born out of the development dialogue and it has to do with the second reading for our metro districts. So we need to have a motion tonight to allow, per charter, us to have a regular meeting on a first Monday instead of, and of course, we'll still have second and fourth. So again, this has been on the schedule. It's been advertised that this would be when we meet, but we need to solidify that tonight. And I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem skilling, as well as the chair of the development dialogue has kind of navigated this through the system.
Yes, Mayor Paul, I move to cancel the regularly scheduled study session at seven PM on October fourth, two thousand twenty-one, to hold a virtual special council meeting at seven PM on October fourth, two thousand twenty-one for the purposes of holding a public hearing and this will be second reading regarding metro districts.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, please cast your votes. There we go. Looks like that passes ten ayes, zero nays. And again, as a reminder to that, please get your stuff into Jay Hutchison. Um, if you have any kinds of questions or or things ahead of time, it's a lot of, lot of stuff in there and I know council's done a ton of work on it. So if you can get those in, that'd be great. All right, we'll go into council reports. I'm gonna go ahead and start with Ward three tonight, the Counselor Springsteen. Go ahead.
I I'll go after Counselor Beta. That's fine. Counselor Beta, if you want to go first.
Is that all right with you, Mayor? Because you're the, you're presiding mayor, is that fine?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, um, all I had to say is we did have a nice uh war meeting on Saturday. Uh, and I just want to thank all those in attendance for coming. We had some new people attending and um had a lot of good questions and comments. So thank you all for for attending. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Springsteen.
Yes, and sort of as an extension of our award meeting Saturday, uh, I decided that I wanted to try a new forum and met with some folks at uh, well, it's supposed to be um Donut Burst, but unfortunately that place, I didn't know it, had gone out of business just like a week before. And so we met at um Starbucks. Um, did want to mention, since it came up tonight, the STAR program, the support team assisted response, which I wrote about in the Looking for Lakewood, uh, where mental health professionals are dispatched to the scene of a nine-one-one call where it's appropriate instead of police. And Denver has become such a national model uh that people are taking up this program across the country, across Colorado. I had a Zoom meeting with several activists in Denver who want to extend it across Colorado and have gotten it into Aurora, um, Colorado Springs before Lakewood, but they said that they have been met with much resistance in Lakewood. And so I'm hoping that we can reconsider that because the coresponder programs don't have the same success as STAR. And we have a difficult history with that in uh Lakewood. Um, I I want to commend uh Jason Compton, who calls in week after week asking for a civilian review board and mentioned that this council ignores him every week. Um, we need to respond to people like that. We need to do something uh proactive. Um, and the other thing, I have some body cam footage from Lakewood from December twenty twenty, and I don't know if it's training footage or what it is. Um, trying to figure it out. But what I do know is that we had the ability for body cams in at least December of twenty twenty. So I'm gonna look into that more and try to figure out what that's all about. Um, all right, that's it. Thanks. Oh, and it's very interesting that the mayor gets to have the last word at every public comment and every report because there's no way to rebut. And I think that's not a very good process.
All right, Ward two.
I'll let Jacob take care of it. He'll probably want to talk about our candidate forum, which he did an awesome job getting everything together on.
Well, sure, I just would say uh Tuesday, we had a great meeting. Uh, we had a lot of people there and we also had a uh online uh part of it as well. Uh, we had a great candidate forum. Uh, I had a good time. I wanted to keep the meeting going, but other people uh overrode me. We had to end on time. Um, and then I just want to mention, since it came up with the uh public comments as well, uh on the STAR program, Counselor Gutwine uh really helped Shepherd getting some of those conversations going uh last year. Kudos to her. I know that some of the people who uh worked to make that happen in Denver uh did have some good FaceTime with our chief and our police department to talk about uh how they could uh do things differently. And uh I know those conversations are ongoing and I think some of the thought process uh when we were talking about those conversations was about uh not making it political and just trying to figure out a way to to, you know, make uh our police department uh the best police department uh to continue to be the best police department in Colorado. And uh so I know those conversations continue. Had to go on and I know they've made uh changes because of them. Body cams, something that's coming down the uh pipe. It's happening. Um, we've allocated money for it. Uh, some of our Tabor money has gone uh towards it. So it it's in the process and uh and so uh I think there's a lot of different uh things and gears moving on a lot of these issues. But I know it's never fast enough, but I know we all want uh to have the best uh police department. We all want to have a safe community for everyone and um, you know, I encourage or would continue to uh support and encourage uh making that uh possible in any way I can. So uh, thanks for your comments and uh we are responding to them and we are listening. So I appreciate them every day that you guys come on. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent? No, okay. Ward one, Counselor Abel Johnson.
I'll defer to Counselor Johnson uh to talk about our Ward one meeting.
Thank you, Charlie. This Saturday at nine thirty, Charlie and I are hosting our Ward one meeting. It's um at Holy Shepherd Lutheran Church. And we're both pretty excited. Paul Scudo from Step Denver is going to be there, our speaker, to talk about his male residential facility. Um, it's a great program. I'm glad to have him. And also, I just wanted to let people know that Gigi's Playhouse, uh, I've never heard of it. There are fifty-four of these places nationally and the very first one in Colorado is going to have their opening on October the sixteenth from one to four. Gigi's Playhouse is actually a support group for parents that have children with Down Syndrome. And then they also have services for children with Down Syndrome, including PT. And the parents that finally got this here are remarkable. Um, I believe that they are hopefully going to come to our award meeting and meet people there as well. Charlie, maybe you have more?
I just wanted, just wanted to mention that the uh Ward one meeting will also be available in a Zoom format for folks who want to watch from home. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Harrison. And thank you for stepping up and joining um, I think, uh Housing Policy. Well, you're filling in for your co-counselor who left and taking on extra committees and certainly appreciate your willingness to do so. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, Ward five will be having our candidate forum um this Saturday, nine o'clock at the West Woods Community Church. Um, we will have four, count them, four candidates participating because in Ward five, our voters get to put two marks on the ballot for um counselors. One that, the first one will serve for four years. The second ones uh will serve for the remainder of Counselor Gutwin's um term. So we'll have that um this weekend, nine o'clock, and I'm gonna cough here. Excuse me. At the West Woods Community Church. Hope you can be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward four.
Your report.
Mayor Pro Tem, is that, there you go.
Uh, yeah, we, in lieu of the uh forum, we have some scheduling issues uh with our candidates, but we uh put together a questionnaire that we did send out to our mailing list, which is over a thousand uh residents. So we've tried to solicit questions. We're encouraging the candidates to post their answers on video. Um, there are some other local forums and I don't know, again, because of candidate availability. October seventh, uh Green Mountain Civic Association is having a forum. I don't know specifically. I I know they they had lofty goals of trying to get everyone who is running for anything, school board, whoever it is. I don't know exactly what they're doing, but they are doing a candidate forum on October seventh at the church there on Cedar at the uh Green Mountain Presbyterian. So that's October seventh. Our questionnaire, your question, your questions are due back, I believe, tomorrow. And then we're gonna publish the answers to those and then also any videos that we uh receive. Um, again, if you want to talk to any of the candidates, both of the candidates in Ward four um are uh accessible, either, you know, you can call them, email them, whatever you need to do. But both of them are accessible, but look for the published questionnaire once that uh comes out.
Great, thank you. Okay, uh shred it day was canceled this Saturday. So please help get the word out. Unfortunately, they'll have to reschedule, but the shred day at Jefferson County um Stadium is canceled. So I know that's a popular event and it sounds like it was out of our control. So uh unfortunate, but stay tuned. We'll try to get more updates on that. Um, Pinton Policy is another opportunity for you to go meet candidates and that's, I think, tomorrow night at Old One Ten Brewery, I believe is the name of it, there in Ward three on the corner-ish of Mississippi and Wadsworth. And so all the candidates have been asked to participate. It's not quite a debate, but it's an opportunity to go stop by and talk to those folks. So that's tomorrow night. Um, big weekend for the city of Lakewood, our oldest and most loved festival, Cider Days, will be taking place and there'll be the old-fashioned tractor pull. If you actually haven't had a chance to go out and see that, it is pretty cool. And uh we have some old tractors that they pull out there and enjoy tremendously. Update on the Housing Committee. Uh, we continue to meet weekly. I just wanted to share with the community what our mandate is. It's to respond to the public health emergency with respect to COVID nineteen or its negative economic impacts for programs or services that benefit populations, households or geographic areas disproportionately impacted by the COVID nineteen public health emergency, focusing on programs or services that address housing insecurity, lack of affordable housing and homelessness. And so our subgroup is working off four pillars, which is to one, look at expanding capacity. Look at ex, how do we stabilize existing affordable housing? How do we strengthen the safety net to kind of keep people engaged or or from going or slipping into uh housing insecurity? And last but not least, ensuring access and equity. And so um it'll be uh many more meetings that will take place throughout now till the end of the year. Again, probably three or four hours a week we're spending trying to make recommendations. So if there's things that you see or folks that you talk to, especially in regards to affordable housing, that could be impacting or not allowing, or certainly ways to create more inventory potentially with existing, please let me know. I'm happy to bring those forward and certainly thank our housing authority for working with us on that as well. Uh, Donut Burst was brought out, actually a very sad story. A Syrian-American family uh who had operated that for nine years actually closed on Friday was their last day and uh their patriarch is dealing with some some health issues that wouldn't allow them to operate the business anymore. But they were a great part of our community and we certainly wish their family the best as they go into a more challenging time. But uh they were grateful when I stopped by on Friday and just grateful for the Lakewood community and all the support, certainly our police and uh and their support of of the, one of their favorite donut shops. So and then last but not least, I think Counselor Labir touched on on some of this. Yeah, you know, we we certainly listen and we hear and and to Mr. Compton. Again, this was brought forth at our annual planning retreat to have a citizens oversight committee and that's not something council chose to go forward with at this time. We are always open and trying to learn more. Same for uh Tess who called in. And certainly I know the difference between STAR and a co-responding program, but what fits for Denver doesn't always fit for other communities. So my door is open and I've had calls with a lot of these organizations and thank you, Counselor Labir. You've been part of that. Our staff does talk to these groups and they are being proactive and trying to learn. And so, you know, if you want to reach out and have a conversation, it'd be fantastic to do that. And we can also get a better idea, you can get a better idea of what we're doing. Metro Mayor's caucus continues to look at co-responding. It's the same thing two weeks ago when when the call came in about homelessness. Why aren't you working together? Well, we certainly are working together with every community in Jefferson County and have a wonderful plan. And so I think there's a disconnect in maybe information that's being put out about what is actually happening and what's perceived to be. So please, let's just close it. Let's have a conversation. I'm easy to find. I sit down with folks on a daily basis and love to walk through any and all of this with you because to Counselor Labir's point, we want the best police department, we want safe community. We want people to feel like they can participate. So with that, eight twenty-eight, I'll give one last shout out to all of our wonderful award winners tonight. Uh, it's one of the coolest parts of this year. I'm glad we could bring it back after two years off. And thank you to this council. Be ready for next week. Again, if you have questions, um, I was not able to attend last week's study session, but I watched and a lot of the counselors turned in incredible questions that were able to be addressed and I thank you for that. It seemed like it helped with the flow and I thank Mayor Pro Tem for running that meeting. So we will adjourn. Have a wonderful week. We'll talk to you soon.